This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Hey, hello, good evening and welcome. I'm going to call this meeting of the Brighton Board of Education to order on this April 9th, 2024, and welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. And before we begin, we wanted to give the opportunity for members of the public to participate in our meeting. So if you're here to do so, we invite you to come to the podium, state your name, and if you're a resident, and share what you'd like to with the community. And I don't see anybody here tonight who would like to come up, so we're going to start on our agenda. Can we first approve our agenda?
Still moved.
Seconded. Moved by Karen, seconded by Eleanor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then let's approve our minutes from the meeting on March 26th, 2024. Which asked so...
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded, okay.
Moved.
Aye.
Moved by Sue, seconded by Esther. Who's speaking now?
Lou.
Lou, okay, sorry Lou.
Big thumbs up from you, we're good.
Okay, and now we'll move on to the budget presentation.
We have to go.
Oh, to approve the other... All in favor, I forgot.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, and now we'll move to the budget presentation by Dr. McGowan.
Thank you very much, this is the, I know you'd be very upset to hear this, but the last budget presentation essentially. And it's really just a very brief recap because we're going to ask you to approve the proposed budget tonight that will be presented then to the community for hopefully their vote certainly, but hopefully also for their approval. It is also the adoption of property tax report card, the result then of the spending plan that we're presenting to the community for their approval. As we mentioned in previous meetings, and I would say again to everybody, all of the materials are available online, all of the presentations and all of the detail, which is why tonight is just simply a very brief recap to what you've already heard, and there are no changes to what was presented to you at the last board meeting. The key budget guidelines, of course, we followed that you adopted in September in terms of making sure we had the appropriate revenues to match our expenses, but that those were sustaining revenues, that we had the right amount of support for the blueprint areas, each of the five priority areas that are listed in our blueprint, again, all available online. We are recognizing the economic climate being as efficient as we possibly could be, that we were planning for long-term investment in our facilities as we continue to do, and that we are compliant with the New York State Property Tax Cap and the long-term impact of our budget on future budgets as well. Our priorities boiled down or summarized were to minimize the tax impact, ensure the appropriate resources that targeted are targeted to student needs, maintain our fiscal stability, and support new and innovative programs, which we believe this presentation, this proposal certainly does. The summary in terms of the updated budget, we're requesting that the community vote on a $4.76 million or also ironically a 4.76% increase to the spending plan. $104,856,329, 104 million, 856,329 dollars is the total presented spending plan. Salary wages would go up 3.7%, overall spending in that area, employee benefits a 10%, BOCs 12.3%, supply services up 9.4%, debt transfer up 8.2%. The very quick sketch of the revenue side of that, what we're looking at is $4.3 million in sales tax, up 7.9%, a pretty significant increase in investment income with a new approach and strategy to that, up $545,000. We would expect then that increase to maintain over time, not to see a 2,000% increase if we see that we shall invest in whatever that is. State and federal aid would go up 6%. That's a key number for us to point out to you because we're still waiting for the state to adopt their budget, and those aid figures will perhaps fluctuate. We feel confident in presenting that at this point. We would ask for an addendum if we need to, if the state budget is different from what is being presented to you at this point as well. Use of reserves of $1 million and appropriate fund balance of $2.75 million. And part of our strategy there is to use money from reserves that will essentially front state aid that we will get in the future for expenses like BOC services and transportation aid that is paid the year following the expense. So we're using the reserves that you have built and shepherded over time to advance ourself, the money that will be coming, to not require then a reduction in spending or program in this current year to accommodate that. Overall then, revenues are expected to go up 4.8%, allowing for that 4.76% increase in spending. The property tax cap calculation, again, which you have previously adopted but is part of tonight's work, represents 1.88% growth from the tax levy base, and it would allow for 1.1% increase in spending. So just that alone, property taxes would only allow for 1.1% increase in spending, and we're asking for 4.76. So the difference being state aid and use of reserves and the other revenues previously spoken to. Staffing is always an important consideration and for something for you to take a look at and for our community to be aware of. The overall number on the bottom right-hand corner is a key to that, of 1.98 total positions. And that really boils down to several different pieces and parts that are detailed in the middle column around some additions for class size, some reductions other places as kids move through the system or there are changes in schedule. But we're not looking at reduction in program, which is really key to point out. In fact, we're looking to add program at the middle level to create a 612 or 712 really aspire program. Right now, that's a 9 through 12 program. And we believe that really aligns well to this idea of new and innovative programming supported by the spending plan, the goals from the Schools to Watch rubric. We've been re-designated again, very excited about that. And really an alternative instructional model that will support students specifically who need additional level of support at the middle level, almost a school within a school type of concept, to make a big place smaller for kids who will benefit from that list, or type of service. This is a list of all of the great accomplishments, and really what we emphasize over and over again is this is a spending plan, it's really an investment portfolio. It's the investment portfolio for our community, and like anybody who would be investing, they'd want to look at what the results over a period of time have been. And the results, we believe, that are articulated here, again, won't read them all at you, really demonstrate, we think, for community members that their investment is well-made, well-spent, and is yielding a great result. Our high graduation rate, closing the gap for our kids in different subgroups, the high number of kids receiving an AP credit before leaving us, or Regents exam with distinctions, awards and participation all over the place relative to the arts, to athletics, and really to evidence of what our kids are doing, relative diversity equity, social-emotional learning, extracurricular activities, all the tremendous number of opportunities that our community has very generously invested in, but we believe it just demonstrates that the money has been well-spent over a period of time. The result for people is important to point out, and understanding the impact of the assessment assessed values on people's taxes too is really something to make sure people pay attention to. The equalization rate going into next year, so this is the rate that the state develops, as we've explained in previous presentations, to make sure that people in different taxing jurisdictions, so different towns where assessment values may be different, are paying equal share of the bill. So it compares the assessed values in one taxing place, namely in our case Pittsburgh, to another, which is Brighton, the two largest in our portfolio, so to speak, and creates a rate so that those groups of people are paying an equal share, even though their values may be assessed slightly differently town to town. And the state does that across the entire state so that there's equalization among taxing places within one, under one umbrella for a school district. Next year, it's 65% in Brighton, in other words, the assumption by the state or the determination by the state is that our homes that are quote-unquote "assessed at full value" are actually 65% of what they should, right? So going forward, think about that, many of us know we experienced a full value reassessment not long ago, but as people have talked about skyrocketing real estate values in our community, what that means is those values have gone way up, and they really can now be looked at as only 65, or our current assessed value is only 65% of what it might get on the open market. The result of that is that the share of the levy, which is over 98%, 98.5% for Brighton taxpayers, 1.5% then, just under for Pittsburgh taxpayers, the rate per $1,000 of full value can't be exactly the same, right? Because it's 65 versus 66. The rate for Brighton properties will be $27.55 per thousand, and Pittsburgh properties $27.13. So that means Brighton is going down 23 cents, while the rate is going way up for Pittsburgh properties, going up $86 from what it was assessed at last year. The, again, the equalization rate, looking at, I'm sorry, that was this previous year. Next year, we're looking at with a levy increase at the cap and no change in the tax base. Now, you don't set the levy till August. So right now, no change in the tax base, and we don't find that out until August, would mean the rate in Brighton would be $28.06, and in Pittsburgh would be $27.64. So $129 in Brighton, plus 1.87%, and up $213, up 3.18% for properties in Pittsburgh. The result is for a home valued at $250,000, $129 increase. Again, home valued at $250,000 in Brighton, Pittsburgh $213. And so of course, if your value of your home is higher or lower than that, it would adjust accordingly based on the rate per thousand if you were to want to check that. So the total spending proposal as mentioned, $104 million, 856,000. That's a $4.76 million increase, it's also a 4.76% increase. The estimated levy then is $60 million, 47,913, or up $1.1 million. That's had our cap number of 1.88%. We believe that reflects, again, an investment, and the budget being a numerical statement about our values and what we're interested in and hopeful to be able to support for kids and families, focus on our blueprint areas, mental health and wellness, academic excellence, student family experience, staff support and a collaborative culture, and safety and planning for the future. And accomplishes really our priorities when we set out in this process, to minimize the tax impact, ensure that we have the right resources to target needs in the district that students have, maintain our fiscal stability, and support new and innovative program, a great example being a new aspire program for seventh and eighth graders. The next steps, budget hearing on May 7th, and the vote, of course, on the 21st, right here in this building, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Can I answer any questions from the committee? Just want to thank again Lou for his financial leadership, but all of the principals, Allison, everybody who contributes to this along the way, they do pretty tremendous job developing a program and a budget to present to the community that meets the needs of kids. And it is a lot of nitty-gritty work, a lot of gnashing the teeth, a lot of line-by-line, how can we do that more efficiently, but how can we make sure we're still supporting kids? How do we figure out where the positions make the most sense? And trying to do that, meeting everybody's needs with a finite amount of resources, and it's a huge challenge, they spend a lot of time on throughout the year. I want to thank everybody for that.
Thank you so much, thank you Dr. McGowan, and thank you, of course, our Deputy Superintendent Lou Alamo and his team as well for all of the work to prepare our budget. So before we approve the resolution for the adoption of the 2425 budget and the 2324 property tax report card, I want to read the proposed resolutions. So the proposed resolution states resolve that the budget for the Brighton Central School District for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2024, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, in the amount of $104 million, 856,329 is hereby approved and adopted by the Board of Education, and the required funds therefore are hereby appropriated, and the necessary real property taxes required shall be raised by a tax on the taxable property in the district to be levied and collected as required by law. Adoption of this budget is estimated to require an anticipated tax levy increase of 1.88%, which complies with the limits of the property tax cap as calculated in accordance with Chapter 97 of the laws of New York. Be further resolved that the Board of Education of the Brighton Central School District approve the 2024-25 property tax report card as presented by the Superintendent of Schools. So actually, I need to make a correction on this agenda, it should say 2024-25? It should say 2425, right, on the agenda? Okay, okay, so we're just making that correction, okay. But the resolutions that I read was...
The resolutions.
Yep, are correct. Yep, it was just the agenda. So can I ask for a motion to approve the resolutions?
Still moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Seconded.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. The next item on the agenda is approval of the second read policies. The policies are Policy 8450, which is instruction for home hospital or instruction, or instructional instruction. Policy 3410 is community relations code of conduct on school property. Policy 8340, instruction, instructional materials and non-public school students textbooks. Can I have a motion for approval?
Still moved. Seconded.
Moved by Esther, seconded by Karen. All those in favor? Any opposed? Questions on that?
It will make a note that it's institutional instruction?
Yes, I was just...
Perfect, just so it's written, right?
Yes, it's because I read, I...
Yes.
About the original, and I was like, this is not the original. Okay, institutional instructions, thank you. You could hear my hesitation on that.
I knew you were, yep.
Yeah, I wasn't toggling, so I couldn't go back to the original. All right, so now we will, we are hearing reports from... Oh, the reports are the financial reports. Can I have a motion to approve all the financial reports first before we move on to the other reports?
Still moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by...
Seconded.
Eleanor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we accepted the financial reports. And then we'll have reports now from the rest of the committee here, so we'll start with our student representative.
Okay, so for clubs, for the Brighton MUN Club went to their final large conference of the year at St. John Fisher, winning best large delegation in addition to numerous students winning individual awards. Key Club attended their annual New York Leadership Conference in March, where they worked with other key club leaders around New York. The Brighton Climate Club attended a protest in the city on the 5th to call for county legislators to support a study into the benefits of public utility. And then before break, friend and me came together to make bracelets for nursing homes. The Galaxy Literature and Art Magazine held a St. Patrick's Day open mic night and held their last meeting of the year. As for our Executive Council, we have completed our elections for the new exec officers, and we'll begin working with them next week, and we're also currently planning Spring Fest. In other news, the Senior Class Council hosted the District Dodgeball Game at the high school to raise funds for senior bash. The AP Euro students left for their Europe trip over break, and the high school hosted their annual and majorly successful Brighton Believes Day, where all students spent around 45 minutes volunteering.
Thank you so much, thank you for the report. Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you, thank you for being here today. Now we're going to start with Board of Education reports. Should we start with Monroe County School Board Association? Labor Relations?
That's Larry, his accent, yeah.
Information Exchange?
So I attended virtually the Information Exchange Meeting on March 13th of '24 for a naval-themed meeting on running a ship-shaped board meeting. And the naval references continued through the entire hour presentation, which was interesting that it could run that, run that long. The whole concept of running a ship-shaped board meeting was about how to have an effective Board of Education meeting, and getting away from the concept of it's just another meeting. This is supposed to be educational and enlightening for all of our audience members and as well as all of us up here. The concept of what is culture, what is the board culture? And this meeting was held ahead of the upcoming elections and things like that, and so as you get new members onto your board, knowing what culture is, what your board culture is, the way of life of a group of people and how you function, and making room for new voices at the table. They emphasized, like, instead of just getting into the habit of this is how it's always been done, actually writing it down and questioning why has it always been done this way? Why are we doing this thing? So it actually was a very interesting meeting. I think that we're doing a lot of the things they emphasized, and I think that the overarching theme was getting away from these accepting beliefs, sort of like, we're doing it just fine for this size school, and getting into elevating beliefs of like, we can always do better. So it was a very interesting meeting. That was my only legislative.
It feels like a weird moment because March is like a lull, right? We visited Albany, we last reported out at meetings on February 27th, and in that time, we've been to Albany, but we've already talked about that here. Dr. McGowan and I talked about our experience meeting with some folks in Albany, aside from our local legislators, to talk about our needs for the upcoming budget season, the budget season we're in. But since then, I've had the opportunity with Monroe County School Boards Association Legislative Committee meeting to sit down with Assembly Member Holly, who represents districts on the western half of Monroe County. He wasn't able to attend our Legislative Breakfast, but one of the things I'll highlight is that like our other locals, those who represent us on the east side, but really across the state, he was committed to that bipartisan support of keeping the foundation formula as is at least for this year, and that's heartening. I know at this point, it's really in the governor's hands, but again, it does feel like a different climate to be in where we have folks on both sides of the aisle really supporting our schools financially. So I appreciate that every time I can speak to somebody who's representing schools across New York State. Tomorrow, we have Legislative Committee. It's our annual meeting with our, with the Regents. So our local Regent is Adrian Hale, he'll be with us, and we hope to have Wade Norwood, who is a Regent at Large but is from Rochester, zoom in from Albany. We were able to meet, we flip flopped that, we were able to meet with Regent Norwood last year, but not Regent Hale, so I look forward to hearing about his experiences. And some of the things that the Board of Regents have been working on, like our Blue Ribbon Commission on graduation requirements. So interesting perspectives there, different from what we hear from our politicians in Albany. And then on Saturday, I have the opportunity to sit on a panel with other members of Monroe County School Boards, talking to prospective school board members, folks who are looking to run in this election season about what my experience has been like and why I serve on a Board of Education. And that's it for now.
Great, we don't have a BOCs report this week, but we do later on, we'll have a vote to nominate a member onto the BOCs Board. Can we start with Eleanor for other board reports and then come down?
Sure. Yes, as Karen mentioned, it sort of feels like we're a little bit in between things right now, and that we're looking, this Thursday, we'll have another Brighton Believes meeting, and look for some more great nominations of some of our community members to be Brighton Believes Award winners. And then in about two weeks, Monroe County School Board Association is hosting a tour of the local Galisano Institute, and so we'll get an opportunity to kind of learn more about their programs and what they're doing. That's all I have to report today.
Yes, so I'm not sure when the last report was put out regarding hiring practices, but we met back in February, and we are continuing our exploring strategies for recruiting, hiring, and retaining diverse teachers and staff. I brought up the suggestion that our, in particular, our staff of color to not only have a mentor for navigating the mechanics of their job, but also have an additional mentor possibly to help navigate the waters of our district as a person of color. I feel the needle is moving in the right direction, but it's just a little slow. It's moving slowly, I'd love it to move a little faster. Our school-based equity team for Brighton, for BHS, met back early March, and we continued our discussion about working on a sense of belonging for our students. We discussed mentoring sessions in small groups, and possibly extending our homeroom to twice a month to incorporate activities that would focus on community building by creating opportunities for collaboration on shared interests and games, and to give kids a chance to relax and to connect. Our next meeting is April 18th. And our Curriculum Council met back in March 14th. We continue to work on our exemplars on various subjects that we're focusing on, and it's proving to be a little harder than we anticipated, but we're confident we're going to have those exemplars for every subject ready by Superintendent's Day on April 16th.
Thank you. Anything else Karen, from your end?
Upcoming, I have 12 Corners Middle School, School-Based Equity Team. So I don't have anything else to report on, but I have things upcoming. Again, we're in that swing season, kind of. On May 2nd, I'll be attending the Monroe County School Board Association Law Conference, if anybody wants to come with me. It's always interesting, are you coming Lou? All right, Lou and I are going to be there. And then, we usually don't meet as Legislative Committee in May, we're usually done in April with the Regents, but since we don't have a state budget, we have an additional meeting in May, and, you know, hopefully we'll pass one by then, and we'll discuss what its implications are, and what that means for Legislative Committee moving forward for next year.
Thank you, anything else?
Although not technically a committee, I would like to point out that the Board of Education represented at the district-wide dodgeball competition this year.
Yes, we did.
Yes, and while we received no awards, I do believe we improved greatly from last year. Training starts this weekend, everyone, for next year's presentation. So that is, that's my additional report. It was a wonderful event for the senior class.
May I add one thing? I was very pleasantly surprised that dodgeballs are much, hurt a lot less than they did when I was in elementary school. And it was a very pleasant surprise as I was out there.
That's why we're practicing this weekend.
Thank you. No, they were not, no, no.
I was not hit, my ball was caught.
Oh.
I don't know which is more ignominious, but anyway. It's fine, yes. Anyway. Wait till next year.
Okay.
Let's see, I met with the New York State School Board Association's DEI Committee at the end of March, and we talked about the upcoming annual convention, which is in October in New York City, if any school board members would be interested in going to that. We also talked about rebranding in terms of, we had a lot of discussion over the summer, whether if we rebrand DEI, if we talk about it in a different way, if we name it something different. And I think the committee came to a position that it was really important for us to go forward talking about DEI, and that we, so we talked through that with the marketing team and how students are representative in their marketing materials. So that was, that's been an interesting ongoing discussion this year. And we also reviewed the resolution review process and the timeline for the committee on how to give feedback, which you were on that resolution Zoom marathon.
It's a little bonkers, I'm just going to leave it at that.
Yeah, so we talked a little bit about that. So that's, those are some upcoming things, and so we'll meet again. We tend to meet in person once in the summer, but we'll see what happens this year. And then I, myself, I did a webinar for Parent Leadership Training Institute on running for school board. They were interested in learning more about it, so there were three of us on the call, and the parents had great questions, and I got to talk a little bit about our district. So that was all good. Okay, and the BTA?
Great, thank you. And I'm going to share just a few things from the March report. So you may not have that one up, but that's what I can talk about. FRES shared that the fifth grade group of the Rainbow Club had a secret rainbow project where they put little rainbows around the building with positive affirmations. And the comments were that students and adults felt seen and felt special, so that was nice. Fifth graders in Kitty Cobert's Extended Studies class evaluated graphs on climate change and were determining whether it was true or false, what they learned about the state of the environment. So you can, well, you may not have that up, lots of cool things. One of the things you'll see in both March report and particularly the April report is how hands-on students have been lately, so just kind of see that throughout, it's pretty amazing. STEM and Robotics Club at FRES used Maki Maki circuits to determine if objects were conductive. They ended up making slime, which is, can complete a circuit. So then they created their own video game controllers using the Maki Maki circuits, and then played with those, so really something special. Corey Gottfried's class studied Jackie Robinson as a changemaker, and lots of collaborally, collaborally, collaboration, there we go. And then there were just some examples of some of the work they did, which, which is just amazing. And then all of them put number 42 on their lockers, so that was great. And at BHS Masterminds, Varsity, and JV Teams... And at BHS Masterminds, Varsity and JV teams. There are two teams this year, not just a Varsity, but also a JV. And they also have a waiting list for being able to go. And then what's really cool is Maria Kitsetos and Heather Bonadonna each shared in different months about a writing project, a pen pal project they were doing between the middle school and the English 11 class. So that was kind of cool. So that's March. Now you probably have April. So busy at Council Rock. The enal, first grade enal teachers and enal teacher came up with a visual for the English learner, English language learner students, which in some of the classrooms make up a third of the class. So they worked with Anna Stuks at BOSI's. And we're talking about Accountable Talk. It's something we do a lot, all the time when we make connections or when we want to add one.
Peggy does it at the dinner table.
Wonderful. So really wonderful set. Lauren Bennett, one of the first grade teachers, made that Accountable Talk sign, which they have posted in the classrooms. And then they're going to create a video to help teach it, which is wonderful. Kristissa has been sharing different seasons in the Friendship Garden. So this is their spring fun day. And the pictures she took were just glorious. I was smiling when I was putting this report together and my husband's like, why are you smiling? And I'm like, because they're smiling. It's just wonderful seeing the play and the fun. In, Liz Porta and Shelley Cannon, two second grade teachers, used the 100th Day of School to put their smarts to the test. They used the Breakout EDU kits and worked on solving, answering questions. There was a town where the power went out and they needed to restore power. So they had to do math problems and puzzles to open all the locks. So you can see the two classes working collaboratively and looking at clues. And then once they got in, and some happy restoration there. Second grade students, this is from Mrs. Youngman, got a treat when Mr. Tappan came in to read. And I tried to position the photographs because the kids were all just laughing so hard. And one of the comments she made was that kids that don't normally laugh like that were just in an uproar. So if you've ever had Matt Reed, you know that he's really good at it. This one I actually put in, I don't usually put anything in, but I wanted to show off a collaboration between myself and Ashley Youngman's classes. We're really fortunate to have the, two of the new classrooms and we make good use of our doors and opening and collaborating. So one view is from my classroom wall, all the way across, and then her classroom wall looking back. And there were just kids working everywhere and it was wonderful. So we used the geodes, which are part of the Witten Wisdom curriculum, and used those books, they're accessible to students, and had the two classes collaborate with each other to create a different way to present the information that was in the geodes. The module that we were doing, Civil Rights Heroes, is not just about civil rights in terms of segregation, desegregation, but all sorts of rights, wheelchair, building accessibility, pretty amazing things. They will be on display during the ice cream social next week, if you're in the building and you'd like to see it. It was pretty amazing work. And what was great, there's a picture of two little girls sitting next to each other and one smiling, and they didn't really, they'd never worked together before. And the one with the short hair made the comment, this was so great, I made a new friend. So that idea of collaboration is just amazing when we can do it. And we're lucky to have that awesome space to be able to do it in. Extended Studies at Council Rock has been very busy. Second grade lunch groups meet and they design trading cards. And then they each get a set of the trading cards and you can see some examples. There's some really amazing ones. Be the Bunny, I really like. And the Dangerous Person is a little terrifying, but cool. Extended Studies Geology Groups, that's second grade. They learned about types of rock and the processes, the processes that form rocks. They looked at geological sites and scientific understanding. And they also looked at the myths that have been created. And then they wrote their own stories. So there's a link there to look out, look at one of the group's books, if you haven't looked at. First grade Extended Studies, Engineers Use Their Habits of Mind to Design Hurricane-Resistant Homes. So again, just all of this amazing hands-on learning. And then you can see the book at that link. Oh, you're reading the story? Yeah. That's pretty cool. Andrea Yaman, our second grade, our Extended Studies teacher at Council Rock, she offers an online biography course. 62 second graders signed up. It's all in our main hallway, if you haven't been to Council Rock lately, it's pretty amazing. They did six weeks of learning at home. They had to read three biographies. And then when they read a biography, they submitted about the habits of mind that they thought that that person used, how they connected to it. So you can see a few examples of that. And then their last job was to pick three people to have dinner with and how they thought that dinner might go. This was Mrs. Youngman submitted as part of our Witten Wisdom, Civil Rights Heroes. We learned about the word injustice and learned more about different injustices and how we learned about not only the response, but the action that happened after that. So we like to incorporate art as much as possible. We learned about Visa Butler, who's a textile artist. And we, the students actually created with the William France Elementary School, which is the school that Ruby Bridges attended. And they did it based, kind of inspired by her artwork. And then they also learned about Say Something. Make sure you use your voice and say something, and that's on the next page. And they also included artwork by Alma Thomas, who is just a phenomenal, was phenomenal artist. And that's also in the hallway, if you happen to be in Council Rock anytime soon. Kindergarten was very busy. They did an author study about Mo Willems, so Elephant and Piggy, Nuffle Bunny. They learned about the style of writing, the drawing, speech bubbles, thought bubbles, and big words. So they added these into their own writing, learned about character traits, decided which one they were most like, were they most like Elephant or Piggy? Everybody picked Piggy for the most part. And then used all sorts of mediums to show their learning. They did the shouting out, don't let the pigeon go to my house, don't let the pigeon eat the taco. So pretty fun stuff. Busy Council Rock. At French Road, Laura Anderson, who's a vocal music teacher at FRES, performed in a concert with a vocal group that's based in Chicago. They're called Scula Antigua and they perform pre-modern music. This was a concert held at the Memorial Art Gallery, along with an exhibit. And really amazing that we have that talent here at FRES. And TCMS, English eight students finished writing a comparative paper about Night by Elie Wiesel and Life is Beautiful. Eighth grader, I'm not sure how he did because this already happened, but Elias Sepo excelled in the state spelling bee. He went on to the regional competition, which he was going to compete against 18 different spellers. The winner of that one was going to go to the national spelling bee. So we know that's passed, but we're not sure what happened. Seventh grade students in Mr. Darling's class had a student teacher, Mr. Dickman, and they did a Lego Robotics and Programming Challenge. They had to get into groups, make up a robotics company and compete for a contract for a waste management company where you can't touch the waste, no human contact. So they had to build, code, test, troubleshoot their robots. And then whoever could, whichever robot could pick up 10 pieces in the fastest amount of time won. They were able to also have a post discussion about what worked well, what didn't work well. So you can see some of the steps, you can see the winners' awesome names. Yep, I love the Lego Batman, the Princess Barbie, pretty funny. And then their feedback and reflection. Students in Science Olympiad and E3 had their competitions at St. John Fisher and RET. Every student who competed in the Science Olympiad placed. And some of their, some of their events were building a roller coaster, flying model plane, taking tests. Students in E3 designed robots to navigate a maze. And then they also got a tour of the polymer lab at RET, which is pretty great. And there's some great photos of those kids. FRES Red and Blue Band visited TCMS. So the six, the blue and red band came to learn about what sixth grade band is going to be like. And then they also got to play with the eighth grade band. Wonderful connection. BHS Masterminds, they competed, lots of domination. That was Heather Bonadonna. And then there's Heather's input about the pen pals, which I love that they're pen pals and then they wrote about each other. Mock Trial has been doing great stellar performances. They had their third mock trial competition and they won. They're moving on to the next level, which is supposed to be at Brighton Town Court. And you can see some of the names of the participants. Last month, Trappizoid went to, teamed up with a grassroots organization called New Voices New York to lobby for the Student Journalist Free Speech Act. They went to Albany to meet with lawmakers and got to tour the press room. German students in grades nine through 12 were part of the National German Exam. Many students did great, achieving scores in the 90th percentile or higher. That puts them in the category where they can compete to have a trip to Germany. So they are doing interviews. And then after the interviews, Marcan Julet, I'm sure I said that incorrectly, was selected as the local winner and now has to take the next part of the test. So hopefully he'll get chosen as one for 16 to go. And that's it.
Amazing, amazing, yeah. And there was a spring break. Right, and that's still amazing, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Everybody was oohing and aahing. There's a lot of activity. And the PTSA?
Okay, so I have a couple of notable announcements from, for March from Council Rock Primary School. In March, FRES held a, well, in FRES held a summer camp and activities fair. And there was a great turnout. There were about 15 vendors that were present to provide information and about 100 people attended that event. And next year, the PTSA plans to hold the event in January when the registrations will be at their peak. And this is the time of year when there's a call for a building chair and event chair volunteers for next year. So the PTSA at CRPS has begun reaching out to volunteers and offering various leadership positions. So far, one building chair and one event chair position have been secured. And then there will be an ice cream social that you just mentioned and a book fair that are upcoming on April 16th, 17th, and 18th. Bus Appreciation Day will be held on the 23rd of April. And the CRPS, PTSA members will donate cookies and $5 gift cards to Dunkin' Donuts. For contributions to the yearbook, the PTSA has been encouraging teachers to take and also share photographs. And then for any parents seeking volunteer opportunities, they're welcome to contact the CRPS library staff. And then finally, parents are continuing to volunteer in the cafeteria to participate with the school's recycling efforts.
Okay, thank you so much. And it's so important, I think many of us were involved in the PTSA in different capacities. So I really hope people step up and take some of those chair and volunteer positions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so important that how much our parents are involved with our district. I love that. Superintendent Report?
As I mentioned, the middle school was re-designated as a school to watch again. And I'm sure in Danielle's next principal report, she'll be able to share more detail, but we're really excited about that. But it reminded me to also announce to you, or more publicly, that somebody here was also designated as something. Congratulations, as of just a few hours ago, Dr. Danielle Edment. I'm so very proud of Danielle and her work, always have been, but it's quite an accomplishment. So congratulations to you Danielle, capping off a lot of hard work. And Eva Barr to our family celebrating tomorrow. We hope everybody has a wonderful day throughout the district, particularly those that are joining our families and celebrations tonight and throughout tomorrow at the Henderama. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the Cooperative Bid for Fine Paper. The bids are done to maximize our opportunity to achieve the lowest cost possible to the district. So can I have a motion to approve this bid?
Still moved. Second? We're going.
Sue and Karen, seconded by Karen. Any, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The next on the agenda is the resolution to nominate a candidate to the BOSI's Board of Education. Our current representative has served for, both on this board and the BOSI's Board, Mark Kakanovich. And he says, he sent an email and he said, "It's been my pleasure to serve Brighton and Monroe One in this capacity since July 1st, 2021, and would appreciate your support to continue my service for a new term, beginning July 1st, 2024, and continuing through June 30th, 2027." So can I have a motion to approve the nomination of Mark Kakanovich to the BOSI's Board of Education?
Still moved.
Moved by Karen, second?
Second.
Second by Esther. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and Mark Kakanovich is nominated to the BOSI's Board of Education. Thank you for your service, Mark. Next is the approval of the resolution to approve Monroe Number One BOSI's annual election and budget vote. Can I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Eleanor, seconded by?
Second.
Second by Esther. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is approval for the Contractor Letter of Recommendation for Emergency Abatement. Do you want to talk anything about this or we're good? We just need to, okay. So can I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Sue, seconded by?
Second.
Second by Karen. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
I would just point out, so people don't, well, for lack of a better way to say it, freak out. This is a normal, when we have the opportunity to abate when we're doing any kind of construction, it is a very normal part of the process and we have to have you approve a letter to do that abatement. So nobody's at risk, there's not an ongoing health issue at all.
Great, thank you for that explanation. And so the next is to approve our consent agenda, but I think what I want to do is read the gifts first, yes? Okay, so we, traditionally, it's a very long list of gifts that we will acknowledge in our consent agenda tonight. So I will read them all, unless we want to take turns and read them together. Can we do that?
I think we should.
All right, let's start with the first one, Eleanor. We'll just go around, round robin.
Christina's teaching. A gift from American Fruit and Vegetable Company of seven cases of apples for the Brighton Believes Service Project. Esther?
Okay. A gift from Midstate Bakery Distributors Incorporated of 35 loaves of bread for the Brighton Believes Service Project.
A grant from the Nancy Beck Memorial Fund Committee in the amount of $1,800 for our Brighton Believes Service Project.
A gift from Palmer Food Service of five cases of peanut butter and three cases of jelly for our Brighton Believes Service Project.
A gift from Regional Distributors of gloves, hairnets, brown paper bags, and sandwich bags for our Brighton Believes Service Project. We can go again?
A gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $3,105 to the Brighton Central School District, Katie Lambert and Howard Innis, for an off-campus visit with nationally-known authors, Jason Reynolds and Brendan Keely, at a multi-district event at Nazareth College, Nazareth University, that is. I'm going to correct the date in the agenda.
A gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $3,927, $2,107 for the purchase of books, and an estimated $1,820 for bus transportation to the event listed in item six above.
A gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $2,000 to the Brighton Central School District to pay speaker honorariums for an assembly where three BHS graduates who have built careers as professors, published scholars, and writers will speak to ELA 12 students and various clubs and select ninth through 11th grade ELA classes.
And a gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $200 to the Brighton Central School District, Katie Mailey, for the annual Dee Bradley Smith Purchase Award.
It's amazing. Thank you to everyone for those amazing gifts. So can we make a motion to approve our consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve? So can we make a motion to approve our consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Esther.
Second.
Second by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. And before we adjourn, I wanted to make sure to thank our tech team. Tonight, it's Mike and Bill. Thank you for being here. Our next meeting here will be April 30th. Our education meeting here, right here in the boardroom. So motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Second by Eleanor. All those in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.